The Common Council Meeting of Tuesday, June 15, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Vervier?
Here.
Fidaver?
Here.
Wahelia? Alder Wahelia?
Here.
Abas is excused. Alboris?
I am here. Thank you.
Benford?
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Carter? Alder Carter?
Present.
Conklin?
Present.
Curry?
Here.
Evers?
Here.
Figaro Cole?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Furman?
Present.
Halverson?
Present.
Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Heck?
Here.
Lemmer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
And Alder Miazze?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have corn.
Thank you. Can I have the staff read the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists can also rename themselves if they wish to add pronouns after their name. Please do not alter the naming convention otherwise. Also, please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. Need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right. So just in general, a reminder that we ask everyone present, council members, staff, members of the public that are here to speak to us, to be respectful of each other and our collective work here of trying to do our best for the city, and in particular to not use profanity. And we'll move to suspension of the rules. Vice President Martin, a motion to suspend the rules, please.
Okay. Move suspension of rules, 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for items so designated on the agenda.
Alder Carter, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing none, those rules are suspended, and that takes us to our honoring resolutions. We'll start with item number one, Legis 65881, a resolution recognizing the inaugural civic season from June 19th to July 4th, 2021. Alder Curry, would you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the Fourth of July celebrates the signing of the Declaration of Independence, which outlines the values of this nation: freedom, equality, justice, rights, and opportunity. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day in 1865 when enslaved Black Americans in Galveston, Texas, were informed that they were free and that the Civil War had ended. And whereas the celebration of Juneteenth reminds us that the freedom promised in the Declaration of Independence only benefited a small group of Americans. And whereas made transformative pieces of civil rights legislation were passed between June 19th and July 4th, including ramification of the 26th Amendment to the Constitution on July 1st, 1971, which extended the right to vote to Americans age 18 years and older, and passage of the Civil Rights Act on July 2nd, 1964, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the fight for freedom, justice, equal rights, and equal opportunity for all Americans continues to this day. And whereas, including more diverse perspectives from the past, and creating inclusive spaces for civic participation, both now and in the future will create a strong, healthy, and sustainable democratic republic for all Americans. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Madison will celebrate the inaugural civic season from June 19th to July 4th, to widen the lens of understanding our collective past, and to inspire civic participation, both now and in the future. Be it further resolved that the civic season from June 19th to July 4th of 2021 is just the beginning. It is up to all of us to continuously do the work of sustaining and strengthening our democracy, not just for one season, not just for one election cycle, but for a lifetime.
Thank you, Alder. It is moved by Alder Curry and Vice President Martin?
Second.
Seconded. And without objection, I'm going to ask our magnificent city clerk, Mary Beth Whittlebell, to just accept this resolution and tell us a few words about what the clerk's office is doing on the civic season.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for acknowledging this inaugural civic season. It's an initiative started by the Smithsonian Museum, and we are excited to participate here in Madison. We will be doing some community outreach, not just on the ability to register and vote as we typically do, but we're also going to work with community organizations to make sure that members of our community understand how to connect with their common council, how to get involved with serving on city boards, commissions, and committees, if they're interested in doing so, how to follow legislation through the local process, and how to connect with their local government. So this is ongoing work that will go beyond even the civic season, but we are very excited to get started with some mock elections, including the mock election at the Fleet Open House next week, and being involved in community events such as the Juneteenth Celebration with a mock election for youth, and also distributing information on how to connect with local government, including your own Alder person.
Thank you very much, Mary Beth. I appreciate, and I think I can speak for the whole council, that we appreciate the work that you and the clerk's office does during this civic season and year round. Yes, a virtual round of applause for the clerk's office. And so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number one? Seeing no objection, we'll record that unanimous vote, and we will move on to item number two, which is Legis 65885, proclaiming June 18th through 25th, 2021, as Madison Days of Reflection. Alder Wahelia, would you read the resolution, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Whereas the Madison Common Council values and recognizes that the past year has been like none other, and whereas none of us has been untouched by the twin pandemics of COVID-19 and widespread systemic injustice, and violence towards Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And whereas this year has taken its toll on our collective spirit in ways we have yet to truly acknowledge, and whereas the Madison Common Council invites all residents of Madison to pause and reflect on our collective trauma, and whereas the city of, the call for a day of reflection on the trauma of the last year was initiated by a participant in the City of Madison Neighborhood Resource Team, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Madison, Madison Common Council and Mayor proclaim June 18 through June 25, 2021, to the Day of Reflection in the City of Madison to acknowledge the immeasurable impact of the twin pandemics of COVID-19 and racial injustice in this community. Be it further resolved that in this, it's hoped that the common council, that people and organizations and businesses across Madison choose to intentionally mark the week of, with an event or activities for their choice to be willing to capture and share that event or activity, Madison-Dane County Days of Reflection. Hold on, hold on. Ooh. Oops, I lost it. I lost my last piece. Hold on. Oh my God. Can't see it. Yeah, here. Be it final resolved that the common council hereby gratefully thanks everyone who chose to pause, to reflect, and therefore to honor all that has been experienced by the twin pandemics. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded then. We do have two registrants wishing to speak. Our first is Amy Noble of Hiawatha Circle, to be followed by Anna Moffett.
Amy, you are unmuted on our end.
Thank you. I am Amy Noble, and I am a resident of District 10. In March, the topic of grief and loss emerged during the Park Edge, Park Ridge NRT meeting, and a small group met to discuss how we might make a community call out to others to make time and space for each of us to acknowledge all of our losses. Tarek Sakaf, Stephanie Bradley Wilson, Alder McKinney, Sarah Schatz, and I took a very broad discussion and created something so simple that it actually seems complex. We were joined by others, including Anna Moffett, and NAMI is graciously hosting this idea on their website. It is our hope that people, organizations, and businesses across Madison and Dane County will choose to intentionally mark the week in some way in shared Days of Reflection. Could range from journaling or taking some moments of silence by yourself, or with friends, family, and colleagues, to hosting a small, appropriately-distanced gathering, candlelight vigil, or walk of some sort. It could be through art or through demonstration. The choice is yours. We simply invite you to stop and shift your gaze to all we have been through together. In simple terms, our ask is that people take some time over the next week to pause, take in, and reflect on all that we have been through. Now, as we come back to the world, it seems more important than ever to hold on to what and who we've lost, what we've learned, and what we've experienced along the way. Thank you, council members, for taking this up to me.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Anna Moffett of West Badger Road, representing NAMI of Dane County.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and also for taking up this resolution. I would just echo Amy Noble's thoughts and comments. NAMI Dane County is grateful to be part of this week of reflection. We see firsthand how the twin pandemic have impacted our communities' mental health and mental well-being, and so we just encourage folks to get involved in whatever way feels appropriate for themselves or their organization. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to recognize Tarek Sakaf on our staff, who is here with us and has done a lot of the work to bring this to fruition. I appreciate his work. Are there any questions for our registrants, or any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, is there any objection? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to hear Tarek's voice, because he was instrumental, and this happened at a Neighborhood Resource Team meeting. And so I just think it's in order that we hear his voice, because he really was the leader and also the motivator for us putting forth this resolution and this week of reflection.
Tarek?
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney, and thank you, council members. It truly was a joint idea and effort. I mean, can't add a lot to what Amy and Anna have already described in the process in terms of how it came together, but I do want to go back to that last part of what Amy was talking about. You know, when we started with this, we didn't know where we'd be in four months, you know, March, and now heading into July. But here we are, and we're at this remarkable transition point where we're going to go back to something, and we better have grown in the process, you know? I mean, I think that's the part that I feel, and that hits me, and that just all of these things that we have been through, all of the hurt and the harm and the trauma that people have endured, that we have all endured together. I think more than ever now, we need to stop and breathe it in and breathe it out, take a moment, and really figure out what we do with it, you know, if that's what makes sense for the individual. But yeah, this is really an invitation for everybody, individuals, to the big corporation, to do what resonates for them, and to lean in a little bit. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you also to the mayor and county executive for issuing their joint proclamation. And we won't have the lights on MMB all week long, but just for the 18th, as we kick this off on Friday, we'll be lighting Madison Municipal Building blue. So thank you for that. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Tarek. All right. Seeing no further hands, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number two? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor, and we'll move on to item number three, which is Legis 65887, recognizing June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth in the City of Madison. Alder Carter, would you do the honors?
Yes, thank you. Whereas it has been over 400 years since the first Africans were enslaved and violently brought to what would become the United States, including to Florida in 1526, and to Point Comfort, Virginia in 1619. And whereas it was not until June 19th, 1865, that federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas, finally emancipating enslaved Texans. And whereas news of the end of slavery travels slowly to the enslaved labors throughout Texas, with some plantation owners keeping the news from them until after harvest of that year. And whereas June 19th is known as Juneteenth in acknowledgement of the fact and to commemorate this date as the end of slavery in the United States. Whereas although slavery was formally abolished in December of 1865 with the enactment of the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the amendment contains exceptions for the labor of incarcerated individuals, which has incited a rash of practices, policies, and laws targeting and disapproportionating disenfranchised Black people in America through criminalization, exploitation of their labor, mass incarceration, and voter suppression. And whereas in 1866, emancipated communities began celebrating Juneteenth as Jubilee Day, and I will turn it over to Alder Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Whereas in 1866, emancipated communities began celebrating Juneteenth as Jubilee Day, and whereas 47 states, including Wisconsin, have declared Juneteenth to be a state holiday. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the continued resilience of people of African descent in America. And whereas in 1997, during the 105th United States Congress, House Joint Resolution 56 and Senate Joint Resolution 11 were passed officially, recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the strength and resolve of Black and African Americans throughout our history, and serves as an opportunity to celebrate the rich and numerous contributions of Black and African Americans. And whereas Juneteenth is also known as Emancipation Day, Emancipation Celebration, Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and Juneteenth Independence Day. And whereas June 19th, 2021 marks the 156th commemoration of Juneteenth. Whereas the City of Madison and Dane County representatives together raised the official Juneteenth flag on June 1st, 2021. The flag will remain raised until the end of the day on June 30th. The flag represents a new beginning. The burst surrounding the star represents the new horizon, opportunities, and promises that lay ahead. The star represents the Lone Star State of Texas, a nod to where Juneteenth was first celebrated in 1865, and freedom of every Black African American in all 50 states. The colors red, white, and blue stand for all Americans who cherish and stand for freedom. And whereas, according to Walk Bird's recent study of 50 states, Wisconsin ranks as the state with the most economic, racial, and equity across eight major metrics, including median income, unemployment rate, homeownership rate, and poverty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Madison and all Madisonians commit promoting racial equity and social justice, bringing meaning and significance to this day as we embark on ways to eradicate systemic racism through police reform, addressing health disparities and economic inequities. Be it finally resolved that the Madison Common Council and Mayor recognize and celebrate June 19th, 2021, in commemoration of Juneteenth. So ends the reading.
Thank you, Alders. We'll take that as a motion by Alder Carter and a second by Alder Harrington McKinney. And we have no registrants, so is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item three? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item three. Move to item four, which is Legis 65909, resolution honoring John Rotten for his work as the Commonwealth Development Adult Employment Manager. Alder Alboris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very honored to be reading this honoring resolution. Whereas John Rotten began his work as an intern with joining forces for families and volunteered numerous unpaid hours to establish the Southwest Transitional Employment Program, aka STEP, and has contributed to moving forward the work of Adult Workforce Development Program of Commonwealth Development. And whereas John Rotten has demonstrated a high level of service, commitment, and dedication since 2013 to working in solidarity with community members in southwest Madison that face exceptional challenges to accessing employment, securing safe and healthy housing, and navigating complex resource systems to build more stability. And whereas John truly believes in the power of trust and relationship building with the communities he works in and along with collaborators insured, there was a framework of humility built into the Adult Workforce Development Program, and has worked tirelessly to keep the people of the neighborhood at the center of every conversation. And whereas throughout his career, John has worked persistently to address systemic barriers that his program participants and community members face. And whereas over the years, John has used his personal resources to support individuals to stabilize their lives by providing transportation, food, or clothing resources, John has always been a behind-the-scenes, end quote, low-key force in the neighborhood. And whereas John Rotten's efforts have certainly made southwest Madison a better place, and the legacy he leaves behind is much greater than he will ever know. Now, therefore, be it resolved... Now therefore be it resolved that the Madison Mayor and Common Council thank John Rotten for his many years of dedication to his community. Be it finally resolved that John's contributions to stabilize individuals and their families will be missed and always appreciated, lifted up and recognized. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. And Vice President Martin, a second?
Second.
Thank you. And we do have one registrant, Lisa Veldren, in support, not wishing to speak. So, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item four? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote on item four. And that brings us then to item five, which is Legisstar 65913, recognizing June as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and June 20th, 2021 as the Longest Day. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas today, there are 50 million people living with Alzheimer's or related dementia worldwide and 6 million of those are Americans. And whereas by the year 2050, someone in the United States will develop Alzheimer's every 22 seconds. Whereas there are currently more than 120,000 people with Alzheimer's living in the state of Wisconsin, over 7,000 of whom are in Dane County, with most people being cared for by their loved ones or a professional caregiver. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative brain disease and it is currently the sixth leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas on June the 7th, 2021, the Food and Drug Administration approved the first treatment for Alzheimer's disease. According to the Alzheimer's Association, this is the first ever FDA-approved treatment for the underlying biology of Alzheimer's, not just the symptoms. And whereas while researchers are working hard to find ways to accurately diagnose and treat Alzheimer's disease, we need to aggressively fund research in order to meet the national plan to find a cure and treatment by 2025. And whereas currently, as many as half of those living with Alzheimer's disease are not diagnosed, or many of those who are diagnosed, the diagnosis occurs at the late stages of dementia. Whereas in 2021, 11 million family members and friends provided 15.3 billion hours of unpaid care to people with Alzheimer's and other dementias at an economic value of more than $257 billion. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association recognizes June 20th as the longest day, asking people to team up with the Alzheimer's Association and select an activity they love or an activity loved by those affected to help end Alzheimer's and raise awareness for cure and support while advancing research toward the first survivor of Alzheimer's. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council recognize June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month and June 20th, 2021 as the longest day and ask residents of Madison to visit www.alz.org to learn more about Alzheimer's and become part of the effort to end this disease. So ends the resolution.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin?
Second.
Thank you. And we have here Carrie Josephson from the Alzheimer's Association, Wisconsin Chapter, to be followed by Fatu Sissay.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Carrie Josephson, Walk Director and former Longest Day Manager for the Alzheimer's Association. Thank you, first of all, for this resolution and for recognizing this growing public health crisis. The Alzheimer's Association leads the way to end Alzheimer's and dementia by accelerating research, driving risk reduction and early detection and maximizing quality care and support. As we just heard, the numbers are staggering with more than 6 million Americans living with Alzheimer's currently. During Wisconsin, there are over 120,000 people age 65 or over with Alzheimer's and over 7,000 of those are in Dane County alone. In addition, in the state of Wisconsin, there are 196,000 unpaid caregivers looking after loved ones. Between the year 2000 and 2019, deaths from heart disease have decreased 7.3%, while deaths from old illness disease have increased 145%. Yes, you heard me right, they've increased 145%. It's the only top 10 cause of death whose numbers are rising. There is currently no known way to prevent, treat or cure the disease. During June, which is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, we seek to raise awareness about Alzheimer's and other dementia in ways that people can keep their brain healthy, such as following a heart healthy diet, doing physical exercise, being socially active and getting an adequate amount of sleep. The Longest Day is the Alzheimer's Association's second signature event. It allows individuals and businesses to host do-it-yourself fundraising events, which connect an activity they enjoy with raising funds for a cause that is meaningful to them to support the programs and services that the Alzheimer's Association provides by different reasons. We celebrate on the summer solstice for the Longest Day, which is June 20th this year. On that day, thousands of participants worldwide will join to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's and honor those that they love along with their caregivers. Thank you again, Mayor and council members for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Fatu Sissay of West Washington Ave, representing the Alzheimer's Association and Karasu Home Care. Fatu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all the council members for recognizing yet again June as Alzheimer's and the Brain Awareness Month. If I recall correctly, this has been going on since 2016 when we initiated these resolutions with the council. So, I'm glad to see it continued and bring awareness to this important cause. So, as the prior speakers have noted, this is a public crisis, it's a public health crisis that is literally going to impact every household. Because right now, we have one in three seniors would have Alzheimer's who are in their 80s. But today, I'm going to talk to you guys about how this disease actually impacts people of color. Because people of color, and I would say the black community, are twice as likely to have Alzheimer's and dementia. So, two times. And they have the most difficult time to access care. So, access to care, it's a big barrier. And this is especially important to access care because it delays the diagnosis of the disease. And now we all know, if you don't diagnose disease on the early onset until the individual goes into mid to late stage, then the management becomes a lot more difficult and the journey becomes a lot more harder for both the person with Alzheimer's and dementia, but also for the care providers around that individual. And 50% of people of color, specifically black people, reported having discrimination within the healthcare system, making it very difficult for people to be able to get in and be comfortable to ask for services. Stigma and cultural differences are also barriers to this disease. One thing that is not mentioned in this report here is Alzheimer's have been the most expensive disease in America. And with black people and people of color being on a low, a lot of them having been in low income, it makes it really hard to get external care, to pay for it. Therefore, most care that is provided in those communities are coming from family members, which also impact the work that those family members are doing outside of life. So, most of them are having to step back from their full-time job, either completely or half-time to provide for their loved ones at home. So, Longest Day is a day of both hope, yes, activities, but also, we said for all of us, we're saying Longest Day is the 20 yet. And for caregivers of people with Alzheimer's, every day is the longest day. There is no sort day for them. And Longest Day is the day we also see most light. So, most light on the Longest Day, to us, that means hope. And what better time to talk about hope when the very first FDA-approved drug for Alzheimer's has just been announced just about a couple weeks ago? So, that's what I wanted to, that really signifies a hope for the future. Because there is a lot to learn about this disease, a lot of devastating, it is devastating a lot of families and loved ones. So, I'm glad to see that the city is recognizing the disease, June as National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council.
Thank you. Any questions for registrants or discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item five. That takes us to petitions and communications. We do have one petition. It's Legisstar 65708, petition received from Simply Homes LLC and the Town of Burke regarding the attachment of rights of way adjacent to Felon Road from the Town of Burke to the City of Madison. Vice President Martin, motion to refer to the July 6th council meeting?
Move to refer to the July 6th council meeting.
Alder Carter?
Second.
Moved in seconded to refer, Alder Figaroakol.
Can you explain what is a petition process? What does that, how does that work? This is the first time I hear about, you know, that term.
Absolutely, Alder. I can get a little ways and then perhaps one of the attorneys can help me out. We generally receive the petitions at one meeting and accept them at the next. But Attorney Haas, can you add more context to that?
I think that's basically it. I mean, the ordinances require matters generally to be introduced at one meeting and acted upon at a subsequent meeting.
So, like anybody in the public can just create a petition? That's what I'm getting, I'm trying to understand, not this petition in particular, but any petition? Anybody can request a petition to go through?
No, Alder, this is a formal land use structure that is about attaching pieces of the Town of Burke into the City of Madison.
So, it's just for a specific purpose that people come to the petition?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to understand the petition.
I apologize, I don't think I understood quite the question, so that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Right, so the motion is to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. And that takes us to early public comment. We have one person here for early public comment, Nico Magayan of Jennifer Street. And I'd just ask you to share with us what item you're here for early public comment on before you start your comments.
Several, several items, and I will name them as I go along. So, you know, obviously the agenda item that you all are considering around body cameras and accepting the report on body worn cameras, I believe that it serves the police's interests and often.
Sorry, I don't think that's on our agenda tonight. That was at the CCEC meeting previously, but I don't believe that's on the council item, the council agenda tonight.
Well, I will move along then with other items to ask you all to consider. So, in relation to that, right, because this is about police and about policing in our communities, you know, thinking about how, so how do we pause and reflect on what major investments of city and taxpayer resources are needed in our communities? I know in agenda item number 35, you all are talking about, you know, holding big pharmaceutical companies accountable and I ask that you all do the same for our military industrial complex police department as well. I mean, we paid 3.35 million to settle with the Robinson family. Meanwhile, we have big pharmaceutical companies and the mega wealthy people who run those paying a pittance for the trauma and the damage that they've done to people and their families. So, the other end of this too is in number 45, we're authorizing the city and the sewer utility to retain special outside counsel on a non-competitive basis to represent their respective interests in issuing debt. And the thing is, why aren't we making water a public right? And we're declaring basically that the pandemic is over and that people are going to need to start paying their bills again. So, regarding agenda item number 53, you know, we know that undertaking continuous education for cultural competency and de-escalation best practices, it shouldn't just be limited to the cares team, as you all are considering in that item. We think that that level of excellence in the training, policies and practices needs to either be extended to all levels of Madison police or policing itself here needs to be abolished. We, the people, are the alternative to policing in our communities and the cares team will demonstrate that to an extent as part of the services that the city and county provides in tandem with the mental health triage and restoration center. We know that these types of investments are just the beginning of the work. And so, we're here today and at every meeting, participating to the extent that you all allow to ensure that the work is being done by the people and their elected representatives and that the work is being done excellently with synergy and teamwork. Indeed, our civic season is never done. Regarding item number 41, with the independent police monitor, we're really all watching with bated breath at how this demand that we've advocated for and brought forth, that was brought by the people, particularly community control over all the hiring, firing, trainings and of course, the abolition of the police. So, we are waiting to see if these demands are going to be watered down or changed or distorted to meet an intent that makes incremental, piecemeal or cosmetic changes to the system of policing and military occupation of poor people's communities, particularly black indigenous communities of color. And yes, agenda item number 60, that is an example of criminalization. It leads to police contact and incarceration. It leads to less life chances and barriers in securing housing and employment, which in this broken capitalist system, they seem to never let you have one without the other. So, in short, fund communities and not policing. For every tiny home village that we build, as you all are considering in agenda item number 80, don't build another luxury apartment building that justifies not having truly affordable housing units. Homeownership support will help families, as you all are considering in item number 81. And we also need security deposit assistance for the overwhelming proportion of the city's families that rents its homes. You know, in addition to a one-time stimulus payment to city employees, as you all are doing in number 83.
Twenty seconds.
How about one-time or monthly stimulus payments for every resident in the city? And we know that the police budget would more than cover that. So, sure, in item number 84, we're accepting federal relief dollars as part of the American Rescue Plan. What's our American? What's our American Rescue Plan here in Madison? I yield the rest of my time.
Here, any questions for the registrant? Right, seeing none, then we're on to the consent agenda. Vice President Martin?
Um at this time, a consent agenda will be moved in with the recommended action listed for each items except items which have registrants wishing to speak, items which require an extraordinary or roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and items which Alders have separated out uh for discussion and debate purposes. Um now I read those, right? Yeah, okay. Um agenda items eight through eleven are public hearing items, and the following items are extra majority items. Uh the extra majority item, vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item forty-three, legislative legislative file number six, five, four, four, eight, substitute, uh amending the twenty twenty-one stormwater utility capital budget to allow for acceptance of a grant from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Now, uh agenda item, agenda item forty-four, legislative file six, five, six, two, six, amending the twenty twenty-one adopted operating budget to transfer thirty-five thousand dollars in salaries and benefits and position uh six nineteen from the planning division to the building inspection this division. Items part of the uh consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Agenda item eighty, legislative file number six, five, nine, one, seven, establishing housing people alternative emergency sheltering. And items requested for exclusion, item fifty-three, legislative file six, five, six, one, eight, amending the fire department and public health Madison Dane County twenty twenty-one operation, operating budgets to add a one uh point zero full-time public health specialist in public health funded by the Madison Fire Department. Items introduced from the floor for referral, legislative file number six, six, zero, four, four, authorizing a grant commitment to Luna's Grocery and amendment to the economic development division budget in the amount of seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, uh which is uh recommended to refer to the finance committee and then common council.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. We also have registrants on items thirty-two and forty-one. Uh so we will exclude those items from the consent agenda as well. Uh are there any additional items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'd like to be uh added as a sponsor for item number eighty-three, six, five, nine, three, three, and item seventy-eight, six, five, eight, nine, five.
The clerk will add you on both of those. Are there any other additional requests for sponsorship or exclusion? Or are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on the consent agenda? It's seeing none, then just to go over once more. Items eight through eleven are public hearing items. Items forty-three and forty-four are extra majority, we will record a unanimous vote. Um item eighty uh will be referred also to the City County Homeless Issues Committee, which will be designated as the lead for that item. Uh we have one introduction from the floor, and then we will be excluding items thirty-two, forty-one, and fifty-three. It's seeing nothing additional. Also let you know that we do have two registrants in support on item fifty-two uh available to answer questions, including one uh that I believe is the developer. Any questions for those registrants? All right, seeing none, then the consent agenda has been moved. Alder Carter, a second, please.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, uh unanimous report uh vote on the consent agenda will be recorded. And we'll move on to our public hearings. Starting with item eight, which is Legis star six, five, seven, two, two, will open a public hearing on a new license for uh Takara Jima Sushi. We have no registrants. So I will close that public hearing, Vice President Martin.
Um move a uh grant, move to grant.
Alder Carter?
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote. Uh then the report of the plan commission and item nine, which is uh Legis star six, five, five, one, one. I will open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district and approve an amended general development plan at sixty-three twenty-one Town Center Drive and to create sections of the MGO to approve a specific implementation plan. On item nine, we have one registrant, Kevin Burrow of University Ave, representing Nothian Bruce Architects, and not wishing to speak uh in support, but available to answer questions. Are any questions for our registrant on item nine? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. Vice President Martin?
Recommend adoption with conditions.
Uh move to adopt with conditions, uh Alder Carter?
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Item nine, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, that item is adopted with conditions. Brings us to item ten, Legis star six, five, five, one, two. Open a public hearing creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at six uh twenty-one Pioneer Road. On item ten, uh we have two registrants. Aaron Otto of Ganzer Way in support, representing Hawthorne and Stone Development, uh available to answer questions, and Janice Faga, also of Ganzer Way in support, not wishing to speak. Are there questions for either of our registrants on item ten? Seeing none, uh Vice President Martin, a motion, please.
Recommend adoption with conditions.
Moved to adopt with conditions, Alder Carter?
Second with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, uh we will uh adopt that with conditions. Brings us to item eleven, which is Legis star six, five, five, one, four. Will open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district at Three Point Place and five eighty-one Deonfrio Drive, uh amending the general development plan and creating a s uh specific implementation plan. On item eleven, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing, Vice President Martin.
Uh move adoption with conditions.
Alder Carter?
Second with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, item eleven is adopted with conditions. And that gets us through our public hearings and takes us to item thirty-two. And we will start uh with public comment. Uh so item thirty-two is Legis star six, five, seven, zero, three, um approving plans and specifications and authorizing the Board of Public Works to advertise and receive bids for local road traffic calming and arterial pedestrian enhancements for twenty twenty-one. And uh first registrant is Kyle Hanson of Helena Street in support, to be followed by Ann Kovach.
Mayor, there's no one by that name in the list, but uh Chair Kovach is here.
Right, so Ann Kovach of Golden Gateway in support.
Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ann.
Thank you very much. Um good evening, uh thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh while I'm the current chair of the Transportation Commission, um I'm not representing the T C with these comments. These are my personal observations and recommendations. This resolution sponsored by the Board of Public Works approves plans and specs and authorizes the Board of Public Works to go bid, go out to bid on projects, described as local traffic calming and pedestrian and bicycle enhancements and improvements. Included in these projects is the Whitney Way Vision Zero project, which was approved by the T C on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty-one, excuse me. The long list of safety improvements included for the Whitney Way project, uh which was included in the memo that the Vision Zero staff team sent you earlier today. Madison became a Vision Zero community in July of last year. As you know, Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. This year's Vision Zero program was approved in the twenty twenty-one city budget. However, traffic engineering brought the Vision Zero projects to the Transportation Commission in order to provide a platform for public comments and for public deliberation. After hearing from the public via testimony and emails, and after significant discussions totaling an hour and twenty-two minutes, including the presentations, the Transportation Commission approved the Vision Zero project list, including the safety improvements on Whitney Way. There are always competing priorities to balance when making transportation decisions. These Vision Zero projects were approved by T C because they improve safety for all modes of transportation. In this case, the higher safety priority requires rebalancing the street and removal of some on-street parking. As the city works to achieve the goals of Vision Zero, we need to accept certain trade-offs. As noted in the July fourteenth, twenty, uh excuse me, twenty twenty Vision Zero resolution is adopted by the council, pedestrian and bicycle safety shall be a priority for the city of Madison with updated infrastructure and safety improvements to ensure those most vulnerable on the roads are protected. These safety improvements on Whitney Way will remove barriers for pedestrians and bicyclists and make walking and biking safer for all ages and abilities. I urge you to approve this resolution and move all the projects along, including the Whitney Way Vision Zero project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other registrants wishing to speak, uh but there are uh three registrants not wishing to speak. I believe you all received the list uh earlier this evening. Uh so on item thirty-two, Vice President Martin, can we get a motion, please?
Um uh move adoption under suspension of rules.
Alder Carter?
Second, second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item thirty-two. Are there questions? Sorry, I should have asked if you had any questions for our registrants. But I see none. Uh are there questions for staff or is there any discussion on item thirty-two? Alder Carter?
Yes, I have question for staff as it relates to Whitney Way.
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, my question is that Whitney Way, for the most part, is a residential street. Once you pass the, well, two things. Once you pass the Belt Line on one side, and then the other side is once you pass Mineral Point Road. At what point is the no parking on Whitney Way?
Uh Alder, our traffic engineer, Yang Tao, is here, I believe, can answer your question.
Okay, great.
Yang?
Uh thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alder Carter. Uh yes, great question. So the uh uh no parking starts uh uh so on the south end, uh south of uh Mirror Point. And also starts uh nor, on the north end, starts from north of uh Old Middleton. Uh so the uh segment with parking right now is from Old Middleton to Whitney Way.
Okay, so let me see if I understood you correctly. The no parking is from um university?
Uh no parking. Yeah, from, yeah, the university to Old Middleton, that's no parking. And also on the south, uh south of Mirror Point Road, uh there's no parking.
Well, actually, it's uh south of South Hill Drive, which is just a little bit north. So we were asking for no parking from between uh university to South Hill Drive.
The South Hill Drive, and and that is residential, correct?
Yes, it is.
That is correct, yeah. Yeah, that Tom is correct, yeah, South Hill is just north of uh Mirror Point, yeah.
So what side streets are there that a person who lives on that street or or guests visiting, where can they park?
So, go ahead, Tom, yeah.
We've um done two occupancy survey surveys. Uh there's about two hundred and thirty-four parking spaces on that stretch of of Whitney Way. And um when we did it in October of twenty twenty, I think it was between one and a half to three percent of it was occupied. So really, just amounted to six cars at most. We looked at some aerial photographs for that section of Whitney Way in two thousand eighteen. And um uh we found that it had about a four percent occupancy, so that's still quite low. Um most of the houses there are um, I'm just gonna say they were built post-war, so they have ample on um onsite parking. The exception might be probably, uh let's say, you have visitors over or everyone comes for Thanksgiving, you know, and that happens. And so uh their visitors will have to park on a side street for those special occasions. But um the parking itself right now is used very modestly.
Okay, and is this change for Whitney Way? Are we going to enlarge the bike lanes? Or is this just taking parking off of Whitney Way?
It's, I'll talk about the bike facility, and it's a, it's a much broader project than just the bike lane. I'll talk about the the bike lane, and then Yang, you can add. Uh right now, um bikes share um the parking lane. And so when a bike approaches a car, they have to get into the traffic and the like. And it's, it's actually, it's a type of roadway that you would probably not have your twelve-year-old ride on, right? You you would, maybe your eighteen-year-old, but you might not have your twelve-year-old ride on it. And what we'd like to do is make it an all-ages-and-abilities uh bike facility so that there's a buffer there. Uh so um cyclist, a young cyclist or a cyclist that's not competent could just ride, and they have a full, you know, ten feet, there's a a two-foot buffer between them and the traffic. And it uh it becomes a good north-south uh bikeway. Because of the streets in the area and the way this was developed, without, you know, a grid pattern, but it's really circuitous side streets, uh there isn't really a good north-south bikeway except for for Whitney Way. So that's just part of the project. Yang, it's it's a much bigger project than that. Yang, why don't you fill in some of those details?
Uh sure, yeah. So Tom, talk about the section that uh where parking uh is present, and the parking that needs to be removed uh to install this uh the buffer bike lane. Uh and the south from uh South Hill and Mirror Point area, uh we also can extend the uh buffer bike lane all the way to Toe Cable Ward. Uh for that section, right now, parking is not allowed. Uh but we do have actual capacity on the roadway. Uh right now, there's three minutes each direction. So we're gonna reduce that to two traffic lanes each direction uh with buffer bike lanes on each side.
And what was the outreach to the neighborhood? When was that done?
So um, oh, Tom?
I was thinking Renee was at that outreach, so she could probably best.
Sure.
Oh, there's Renee.
Yeah. Hello, so Renee Callaway, also from Traffic Engineering. Um and I took the lead on the public meeting that we did hold. I believe it was in March, actually, um that we held. that we held that. And then we did follow up with an email before we went to the Transportation Commission to let them know what our recommendation is and to let them know that they also were able to come to that meeting and share their thoughts with the Transportation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin?
Is it appropriate for me to answer a little bit more about that now, or should I wait until?
No, Alder, I think you could speak to that unless Alder Harrington McKinney has questions for staff.
No, I absolutely want Alder to speak to that because one of my questions was with the, with the public comment. What was the public comment related to the buffered bike lanes? And I think the Alder could add some kind of context to that. And so I yield to hear what the Alder has to say.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Vice President Martin, go ahead.
Yes, we did have two public meetings initially, and that was mostly related to the, for the BRT project. This was originally, the buffered bike lanes were supposed to be a part of that project and actually garnered quite a bit of conversation during those two meetings. In response, because there were still questions, I asked that the buffered bike lanes be removed from the BRT proposal at that time, so we could discuss it more. And we did have another meeting specifically to talk about the buffered bike lanes. This, however, was during the time when we weren't allowed to use our, you know, send email blasts, send more than 50 pieces, because it was campaign time. So I, we put it together, we had Renee come and give a presentation and answer questions. So there were three opportunities for people to come and talk about this, and they did come. A lot of people came, a lot of people submitted comments, a lot of people submitted comments to me, to Ms. Callaway, to Director Lynch. So there was quite a, I would say, a fairly robust process to engage. Even though, you know, I was hamstrung, we were hamstrung by the rules regarding using our email accounts to get ahold of people.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, I have a question of the Alder. And for the discussion at the Transportation Commission, what, there's a lot of activity in terms of sign-up and conversation about the buffered bike lanes. And what I heard, and so that's why I'd like to, you know, I wanted to hear your input, is that they said that there was no opportunity to really discuss in a meaningful way public information and input about the buffered bike lanes. And so is that validity in that? Or could the Alder?
Alder Harrington McKinney, I believe what I just heard Vice President Martin say is that she held at least one meeting specifically on the buffered bike lanes. But Vice President Martin, if you'd like to respond, you're welcome to.
Sure. Like I said, we had two meetings regarding the BRT, and the buffered bike lane discussion was very heavily discussed at those two meetings. Because the desire was to get the BRT project moving, I asked that we remove that particular part about the buffered bike lanes, so we could talk more about it. And so we took time, we had information and presentations, and it was specifically regarding buffered bike lanes in that specific area. We had many registrants, I can't remember, but there was quite a robust discussion. There were lots of questions asked via the chat. And Ms. Callaway did an excellent job presenting, explaining the reasoning why this was an option, talking about the accidents that have been happening on Whitney Way last summer. Some motorcyclist was killed, actually, during one of our meetings because he was speeding. The number of complaints that we get for people trying to cross Whitney Way and having trouble with that because of the speeding. This was a way that traffic engineering thought would not only provide better and safer access for more modes of transportation besides single-vehicle cars or single- rider vehicles, I'm sorry. But this also was going to help with speed control. And so that hopefully, the notion, or the, I mean, people in this neighborhood, and this is my neighborhood, I live here. And they, it's referred to as like the Whitney Way racetrack. And these are some of the ways that we can slow down traffic and make it safer, not only for cars, but make space for the BRT to take cars off the streets, but also to provide space for bikes and bike traffic, as well as making it safer for pedestrians that walk down there all the time. You know, we have a lot of people from my neighborhood that walk across on South Hill and walk to Garner Park. It's a huge, it's a huge park and gets used quite a bit by neighbors. And a lot of people, there are people that will drive across because they don't want to cross that street. So this is a whole big package of ways to make Whitney Way safer, as well as bring it into alignment with complete streets and Vision Zero. And like I said, there were three opportunities for people to comment and to listen. And the last one was very highly attended. I suppose Ms. Callaway can talk to the specifics of that discussion, but there were lots of questions asked, and she stayed and answered them all.
Thank you, Ald, thank you, Alder, for taking the time to answer my question. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Thank you, Vice President Martin. I believe that Yang and Tom might have wanted to add something to those answers. Yang, did you want to add something?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank Alder Martin, you know, for working with us through the process and for providing those information. I also wanted to add that, you know, we also provided the first opportunity in front of Transportation Commission. So many people attended that meeting as well, and expressing their support or opposition to the project. As Chair Ankovich mentioned, that we had a robust discussion over there as well, lasting well over an hour. So I also want to thank Alder Martin for mentioning the safety benefits of the project. So it's a comprehensive approach to manage speed in pro safety. I mean, time increase accommodations for the bicycles to complete the network. So just give you some statistics. You know, for the whole stretch of the project we're talking about, over the last five years, we had 131 crashes leading to three fatalities. And for this segment where parking is removed, is being removed, we had 47 crashes over the last five years, with one fatality that was mentioned by Alder Martin, that was speed-related, and estimated speed was 80 mile per hour, a single vehicle, and lost control and lost, you know, lost his life. So we really want to, you know, avoid this from happening. And, you know, definitely there are pros and cons about the project. We recognize that, and we agree with what the neighbors said, you know, the impacts on their lives. Those are totally true. You know, the inconvenience, the prior costs to the parking issues, that's absolutely true. However, when we look at a citywide network perspective and also looking at the safety, you know, we feel like there's much more, there's much more benefits than disadvantages. Thank you.
Thank you, Yang. Tom?
Yeah. Thanks, Yang, for those statistics. Those are actually very helpful. I just want to provide a clarification that it was separated from the BRT project because it's really an independent issue. The BRT can exist on Whitney Way with or without the buffered bike lanes. And so, you know, they're just, you know, one is being implemented for vision-zero reasons, and it's a separate issue from the BRT. And so they've gone through separate approval processes because they're different projects. I just needed to put that clarification in.
Thank you, Tom. Alder Wihilehe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This question is for Madam Alder Martin. Based on the community, the community engagement and the public comments that you have seen, would you say your constituents are on board of this project? Are they in favor of this project?
And let me just pause here to remind us all that you should direct your questions to the Chair and that Alders are free to answer questions from their colleagues but are not obliged to. Alder Martin? So we'll take that as a question to the Chair, Alder Wihilehe. And I'll invite Alder Martin to speak if she wishes.
Thank you. So like any project, we get mixed results. There are a lot of people that like it, there are a lot of people that don't. Not surprisingly, the folks that don't like it are the ones that either live on Whitney Way or within a block in that section. The further you get out, the less, the less, or the more support there is for this project. And I very much understand the concerns of losing parking in front of one's home. I don't really have, I live next to a school, and there is a no-parking zone in front of my house. So I, I understand it can be difficult. But at the same time, we have to take, being an Alder means taking into consideration not only my constituents and their concerns, but the need and the impact that this decision had city-wide. And due to the support that I got from many other constituents and understanding that the non-support, or those that don't want it, are the ones that unfortunately are directly affected. But I felt in my decision to help move this forward was that this is something that the city is going to need as we gain more residents and as we will need more transportation options other than people just taking their cars to work. So I, that is, I mean, that's why I'm supporting this. And I, that's, it was mixed.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Thank you, Alder Wihilehe. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is there any discussion of the item? The motion is to adopt. Seeing no discussion, is there any objections recording a unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption of item 32. That will bring us to item 41, which is Legisstar 65569 recommending that the Common Council approve the revised independent monitor, police monitor description. On item 41, we have several registrants. We will start with Shadira Kilfoy Flores of East Wilson Street in support, representing the Madison Police Civilian Oversight Board, to be followed by Kitra Burnett.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Common Council. I just want to share what an exciting experience it has been to be appointed to the Police Civilian Oversight Board. I'm really, really excited about the work that we've been doing. And the independent monitor position description has been a, just a fantastic example of community coming together. There have been dozens of people who have put their input from the task force to the entire oversight board to our Director of NAICOL, who has, is the National Association for Civilian Oversight, and all of our wonderful city employees, from Michael Haas to Karen to Julie. Just, it's been a pleasure getting to know these people and working with these people. And it's been an honor to co-chair with Kitra Burnett, and I concede the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kitra Burnett of Atwood in support, representing the Madison Police Civilian Oversight Board, to be followed by Ankiti Pahardwaj.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Common Council. My name is Kitra Burnett, and I serve as the Chair of the City of Madison's Police Civilian Oversight Board. I would first like to thank each of you for providing an opportunity for me to share information with you this weekend, I'm sorry, this evening. I would also like to thank you for your leadership and approval of Ordinance 5.20, which authorized the creation of the City of Madison's Police Civilian Oversight Board. Additionally, thanks to the Alder Work Group that developed the logistics and operational details for the Office of the Independent Monitor. Thank you all so much for authorizing and entrusting our team of volunteers to lead this work. Please know that I have no doubt that our combined passion, life experiences, education, and the dedication of our members will support us in doing amazingly collaborative work. Just wanted to provide first a brief overview of the progress that we have made to date. Our civilian oversight board has facilitated over 25 meetings since our first meeting on Friday, November 20, with those meetings averaging three hours each. During that time, we have established three priorities for our work for 2021, the first being our completion of the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement Training. There is a mandated three, four-hour trainings, and we have completed two of those three, with the last one being scheduled on July 8. We have also prioritized the City of Madison's hiring process, so undergoing training for that, which included a review of the city's equity toolkit. The third priority that we've established, and actually probably the highest priority that we've established, is the hiring of the independent monitor and staff of the independent monitor's office. We're all really excited to place someone in this position, so some of the weight of the work that we're doing now can be lifted off the shoulders of volunteers and onto the shoulders of the paid staff. As I mentioned, both of the previous two priorities have supported us in taking steps to post and hire the independent monitor. We are in the process now, we are presenting to you, as we did last week to the Common Council's Executive Committee, some recommendations, recommended changes to the independent monitor job description. First, I'd like to mention that none of our required recommended edits require any changes to the ordinance by which the independent monitor position was created. High-level overview, primary edits were made to further clarify the role and responsibilities of the independent monitor.
That is time.
Alder Furman?
Mayor, can you please give her another minute just to finish?
Is there any objection to having the registrant speak for another minute? Seeing no objection, go ahead, Kitra.
All right. Most of our discussion was about the education and experiences listed in the minimum qualifications section of the position description, with some of our board members feeling that education should outweigh experiences and others feeling that experiences should outweigh education. The compromise after eight three-hour meetings of a task force that was created to review these recommendations was that we add a clause that says, "In lieu of a specific degree, an equivalent combination of education, training, and experience shall be considered." I'll stop there. We hope that you will respect and honor the work of our team of volunteers and appreciate, demonstrate your appreciation of the time that we have. of the time that we have exhausted in this process by further supporting the recommendations that we've made. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Benford, we have one more registrant. All right. Thank you, Alder. So our final registrant on this item is Ankitah Hardwash of Badger Road in opposition, wishing to speak.
First of all, I would like to thank everybody on the civilian oversight board and my wonderful team of equitable hiring tool task force and wonderful city staff people who helped us on every single step until today. I'm speaking on behalf of my own self and no one else. I'm a member of civilian oversight board and I chaired the Equitable Hiring Tool Task Force that gave the recommendation to the board to edit the qualifications and make higher educations plus experience a part of it. Not everyone on the board currently, as we speak, agrees that the current minimum education and work, work experience qualification should remain. I'm one of them. We are, however, a minority. This description is very vague and an applicant will struggle to know if they are eligible to, eligible to apply or not. Plus, not mentioning what degrees we are looking for will discourage educated Black, Brown, Indigenous, Asian Pacific Islander, and South Asian Desi folks. I firmly believe that we must also include these folks who have access to higher education. And there are many folks of marginalized communities mentioned above who have higher education and will be eligible for this job if you make this amendment. If not, their hard work and passion to fight the system to get access to higher education will be let down and will go unappreciated. We must acknowledge that such folks have a lot to give too. Other civilian oversight boards of the country actively seek folks with education or who are wealthy in experience. Why are we not following the proven mantra to success? The class tech of this position is G21. It's the same level as the Chief of Police. The salary that the city will give to this person that is the Independent Monitor is comparable to the Chief of Police as well. If you won't put the present minimum qualifications for Independent Monitor for Chief of Police, I do not understand why we would put that for Independent Monitor. I firmly believe equity means including those of us who have not had the opportunity to be educated, but also being inclusive of those of us who are wealthy in experience. At the end of the day, it's not one of us versus the other. We are a community. It's us against the problem. The problem is that we are not doing enough to set Independent Monitor and Police Oversight up for success. The solution is to do what other civilian oversight boards of the country have done for years and what other job qualifications of the same class tech, G21, are always based on, that is raising the education requirement and experience. We have examples and guidelines for success. We just need to utilize it. I hope you will make your decision in favor of equity so that those of us who don't have access to equality can be fairly represented in governance and administration. I did my part now. Now it's your time, respected council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our registrants on this item. Are there any questions? Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm hoping Kitra could answer a little bit more detail on what, what the process was to change the job definition. How many times did they meet? What process did they go through to determine these changes that are in front of us today? So we can get a little bit more background than what she provided.
Thank you, Alder. Kitra?
Thank you so much for the question, Alder Furman. We actually created a task force made up of five members of our civilian oversight board. Interestingly, that task force was led by Ankitah, who just shared her personal remarks. The task force met eight times, each meeting averaging three hours. The motion that was presented previously and the recommendation that was presented previously by Ankitah was also discussed at the task, in the, in several task force meetings. However, the task force members decided, the majority of them decided to change the language to come to a mutual, the mutual comment that I added before, that statement being that we would, "In lieu of a specific degree, an equivalent combination of education, training, and experience shall also be considered." That was the compromise of those two, of the two different sides. Primarily, the majority of the people felt that experience should outweigh. However, I should mention that, as I, as I said before, Ankitah led the group, took eight different meetings, averaging three hours each, to come to the conclusions that they came to. The task force then presented their recommendations to our civilian oversight board, where yet again, the motion that Ankitah just presented or just championed was also discussed with our full board in several meetings. And the decision again was to support the Equity Task Force's conclusion to add the compromise, "In lieu of a specific degree, an equivalent combination of education, training, and experience shall also be considered." So that has been our consistent conclusion. We were quite surprised when, in the Common Council's Executive Committee meeting, as a leader of our Equity Task Force that walked through this work, Ankitah expressed an opinion that is not the opinion of the larger task force, nor the civilian oversight board. However, as she expressed today, it is her independent opinion. And we think that's unfortunate. Also, it was a surprise and we think that it is quite unfortunate that after over 21, actually 24 hours of meeting time, as the leader of that task force, she would choose instead to represent her personal opinion and not the consensus of the group.
Thank you, Alder Furman. Alder Benford?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question. I think maybe Ms. Burna can answer it or maybe someone on the Oversight Board. First of all, thank you for your work. You truly are pioneers, laying the foundation for more trust and accountability, and it can't be easy. So my question isn't related to the educational standards, but I was wondering if maybe you or someone else can tell me why the competency standards were taken out?
Sure. The, actually, let me see here. The, I'm trying to get the exact title. So the core competencies were removed from the position description because that information is also included in additional documents that will accompany the job description. They'll be included in the job brochure. So including them in both places made the job description unnecessarily long. And so we felt that it was, because they were represented in other places, they didn't need to be also included in the job description.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alder Benford. Alder Bennett?
Hi. I just want to say thank you to all the speakers. The work that you do is truly, truly valued and I want to make that really clear. And the time and passion that you've put into this is incredible. That's, I want to ask a question to Ankitah. As the Chair of the Equitable Hiring Task Force, I was wondering if you could give some insight to what was the recommendation to the committee regarding the educational requirements? And what was the basis behind that decision?
Thank you for asking that question. I'm wondering if you meant what was the suggestion of the task force to the board? I'm not sure which committee you.
Yeah, I, I mean, like, what was the, like, recommendation from, or, yes, suggestion from the Equitable Hiring Task Force to the board?
Okay. Thank you for asking me that question. Yes, at the task force, we had not reached a consensus and I was one of the folks who was in favor of increasing education and experience, both, not either/or. And we gave two options to the board to accept, which was option one, "A bachelor's degree in a related field will demonstrate sufficient formal education, but experience may be substituted for education. Other combinations of training and/or experience will be demonstrated to result in the possession of the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to perform the duties of this position will also be considered." That was option one. Option two is, "A bachelor's degree in a related field or a master's or jurisdoctor degree will demonstrate sufficient formal education, but experience may be substituted for education. Other combinations of training and/or experience, which will be demonstrated to result in the possession of the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to perform the duties of this position will also be considered." I do want to point out that one of the biggest failures of democracy is misrepresentation or underrepresentation of the minority views. And I feel that that is something we should all understand, acknowledge, and work through it so that views that are not, majority views, are also respected and considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Any additional questions?
Yeah. I was just wondering, because I, I feel like the second part wasn't answered fully, just about like, what was the basis behind, like, increasing the educational requirements as, you know, although it was like, it might have been the, the full majority, but there was a strong, there was a significant minority of folks that, like, did not fully agree with that point. So I was wondering if you could provide more insight to that view for those folks that, for the folks of the, of common council that weren't privy to those meetings or haven't been pretty, pretty.
Yeah. I can provide that information. We never increased the education requirement. The job description and qualification that was given to us from the common council, the last common council before y'all got elected, and of which Alder Campbell, Alder Bedar, and Alder Moreland were like basic actors in making those, you know, those requirements and minimum, minimum requirements of education and experience. There was always bachelor's, master's, and jurisdoctor. We did not increase anything. We just, when I see we, I mean, E, equitable hiring tools, recommendation to the board, did not increase any job or any education qualification. We just mostly divided it into two parts because some people were hesitant to keep the same education and experience requirements that the common council, the last one, had given to us. I hope that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Are there any other questions for our registrants? All right. Seeing none. Then Vice President Martin, I believe we need a motion. You're muted.
Move to adopt.
Alder Carter?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item 41? Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes, I have a question to staff. And it, what is the educate? And I'm going to put it out there and whoever can answer it. What is the, number one, we clarify what the, the comp position is? And what is the education that's associated to, to that position?
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. I think we're going to turn to possibly Harper Donohue, our HR Director and/or Attorney Haas, to clarify for us what comp group this position is in and what the comparable education requirements are in that comfort.
Good evening. I'd be happy to jump in with that. So this position is in Comp Group 21 at range 18. A comparable position that I think most of you will be familiar with would be the Common Council Chief for Staff. In regards to the education experience for that, I'll briefly read what we have detailed in that class spec. Four years of related experience in policy development and advocacy. Such experience would normally be obtained after graduation with a bachelor's degree in public policy, public administration, journalism, finance, urban studies, or related field. A master's degree in public policy, urban planning, political science, public administration, or related, or a law degree may be substituted for two years of experience. Other combinations of training and/or experience, which can be demonstrated to result in the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to perform the duties of this position, will also be considered. Alder McKinney, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does answer my, my question. And what I, what I heard is that there was a bar set in terms of educational standard, but there were other things that were, would be considered in that hiring. Is that what I heard?
Sure. So, so typically, when we go out with positions like this, we will set a bar. But if a special experience would normally be obtained, that does open the door so that if the individual doesn't at least have, like, we reference a bachelor's degree, but that opens the door so that there is an individual that's competing and that individual has amazing experience, but they don't have the education, they can still compete and get to the table possibly, depending on what that experience is, as long as they can demonstrate that they do have the experience representing the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary for that job.
And so my final question is, is that if there is, and I'm just going to rephrase it so I can make sure I heard what I heard, is to say, in that interview process, those considerations would be considerations, but there is a standard in terms of an educational bar, but there are other variables that would be considered related to who sits on the hiring and decision-making board?
So for the most part, the information, we're talking about minimum qualifications. That piece is taken in house. So that, that screening would be done by human resources. So Lou Tremble's on the call. Do you want to use that to determine who can compete, who can go further in the process? And from there, there would be screening and subject matter experts who will review the criteria to see who would advance in the, further in the process.
Okay. And then finally, could you just give me a cap in terms of the salary range for Comp Group 21?
My apologies. I believe it's somewhere around, I don't have that information in front of me. I'm sure that someone else on this call, Mike, do you have that? I believe the cap was around 139,000, 140,000? 103 to 139. But Julie, can you please confirm that?
That's good enough. That's a good enough summary range. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder, figure of call, questions?
Yes, for Harper. Also, so can you confirm for me, is the language, the current language on this application to the standards for, you know, to, for your HR temp standards? Is this something that, that that makes the mark or matches what you just read for us? Or will this make it more difficult for you to get people to apply? Do you see any barriers here on the way that the, that the education clause is being described?
I really hate to weigh in in that way. Just because I believe that you all gave this a task and that they tried to respond with their. So I don't want to really interfere with that. I believe that Julie was available and present at most of the, the meetings they had. So as far as her ability to screen, I think she has a good understanding in regards to what folks are looking for. So I think she'll be able to do that. For the most part, this information that we're discussing as far as minimum qualifications, on our end in HR, I think it's going to be a competitive process. Folks that are qualified and have the ability to do this job, when they see the title of an independent police monitor, they're no, they have a better idea in regard, folks, the individual who will get this job has a better idea than most folks on this call in regards to what the needs of that position are. We're going to, visual. I think it'll be competitive. I think folks spend a lot of time on minimum qualifications. Just the petition, I would be very surprised if we selected someone that didn't have a master's degree. And that's just with a lot of our positions at this level. So that may be a better question for Julie in regards to her ability to screen. But I, I think there's enough direction so that we can kind of, we have a general idea of what folks are looking for. But Julie, would you like to weigh in? I don't want to speak for you.
Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. Yes, I did sit in through those meetings and I am comfortable with the screening. The post-secondary degree in a related field, that does not necessarily have to be a bachelor's degree, just a post-secondary degree. And I am comfortable with the related aspect of it as well.
So when he says four, four years, I think that's what it says, that it requires four years and a post-secondary degree. So that means four plus something else. So at the minimum six, is that what there's six years that is not being, like, it looks like the six years was removed from prior, was redlined? So by putting those two sentences together, you're combining a requirement of four, four years plus a second post-secondary degree. plus a second post-secondary degree. It's kind of confusing to me, like, I mean, four years is a post-secondary degree, so it goes in, I couldn't understand that part that is a plus. A total of six years. I only understand it's six, it's six years because the red line mentions six years. So that kind of confused me the way that was, you know, um, um phrased. So I wonder if that is also standard, if that is a standard language.
So, yeah, it would be four years um, in addition to a post-secondary degree. Um, again, as has been mentioned previously, we can look for equivalent combinations of education, training and experience.
Okay, that, thank you. I was really honestly confused about the, the whole wording of having these two sentences. You know, like it seems like it's a requirement, you have to have four years plus something else. And then um, followed by, we will combine those with experience if needed. That's, I, I wasn't clear that's how, how it was meant to be read.
That is pretty standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions? Alder Bennett, questions for staff?
Yeah, okay. So I have a question and if I'm being redundant, pre-stop me. Um, but it's something that was discussed in the Commons Council Executive Committee meeting. Um, and I think Harper, you answered this question, but um, uh, the language as it's written, something that was discussed is like making sure that we're hiring like the best person fit for, you know, the job and the implic- the implic- ah, implications of um, you know, not necessarily hiring, setting of, like setting someone up for success. So I was wondering if you could like speak towards that broader issue and like, um, do you think the language as it's written will like affect that area in any way?
Um, ultimately, I think just through a competitive process, you're going to find an individual that's highly qualified um, in regards to the education and experience. Um, I think what you're referencing or referring to is um, a lot of often when we have the use of the equitable hiring tool, um, discussion center around education and then folks move to um, stripping down minimum qualifications in an attempt to get a more diverse um, selection of applicants. And I, I personally, I push back on that because I haven't seen that result in getting more folks of color to the table, um, or getting more folks of color hired. I think we have highly qualified folks that are competing for jobs. I think we just need to do a better job overall in selecting folks once they get there. Um, and that's really my take. Like I've been watching this for years. I've, I've been a part of um, I, I understand the, the attempt, um, motivation, but I, I, you know, I tend to push back. I think when we use equitable hiring tool, I think it's important to be genuine in regards to what we're looking for. And if there's specific needs that we have for these positions, I think we need to be honest in regards to what we're looking for. Um, and, and then work to try to get folks that can meet those needs.
Thank you.
Alder Conklin?
Thank you so much. Um, I guess this is probably for Harper as well, but when you were talking about the salary, um, I read in the paper that this is a five-year contract. So is that salary per year or over the five-year course?
That's per year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions? Alder, you're muted.
Thank you. Harper, this is a follow-up question. Um, as the language of the original task force around the job description um, as it was written, um, does that contain the, the, the leeway, the flexibility, the considerations that you spoke to in terms of, you know, education and those other things that you take a look at? So I'm, I'm trying to measure um, the uh, job description as it was and will that get to what is um, um, woven together in this substitute? Does that make sense or does it sound like I'm confused?
No, I, 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 I believe I understand what you're asking, but um, when I left the conversations about a year ago, there are about three or four different iterations of this class spec. Um, so I don't, the last conversation that I recall from last year, I believe that the group was moving towards, um, they wanted to require a law degree. Um, and then there's further the uh, conversation about the use of the equitable hiring tool in this position before back to the Oversight Committee. Um, I pushed back on the law degree because I felt that that was setting the bar um, a little too high. Um, I was encouraging the group to, you know, to use equitable hiring tool while we're making these decisions and that language did get put into that resolution. Um, I can't recall the specifics of the language that, that, um, the group came up with, with that version. If someone else has it, I'd be happy, if you want to read that out, I'd be happy to tell you how I would interpret that language.
Alder, does that speak to your question?
Um, it was a question probably not as clear as it should have been, so I, I will take that as a response to it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole.
So this one is an easy question. Once we approve this, this um, this resolution, um, when does the hiring process begins? It's like you said, we've been at this for a year now or something like that. So when, when, when do you anticipate we get somebody already serving in this position?
So I think if, if everything is all set with the position description, uh, we can go through the request to fill process. Um, I believe that Julie may have actually already started working on some of the, the brochures, the pamphlets, different things that would be associated with the position. I believe she also started working as far as the recruitment strategy. So I would think that who would, next couple of weeks, a position at this level should be posted for at least, I would say, five to six weeks. So folks to respond to the supplemental questions, um, yeah, I assume that the committee would be tasked with finding subject matter experts to assist with the screening. Um, Julie to find folks for that first order board. And I believe it'd probably be the leadership of the committee making that final selection or if it'll be the group. Um, also, so I, I used to like to say ninety days, uh, position at this level. Um, I, I yeah, no, we're four months away, three to four months away.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for staff? It's seeing no further questions. It has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Carter?
I'd like to introduce my amendment.
Alder Carter will introduce an amendment uh, which she has shared with the council and the clerk. Uh, Alder, would you like to read your amendment or describe the changes, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, I am request, well, for education, it's a bachelor degree or higher. I'm not really um, specifying what degree higher is. And I've listed, which was in the original, the different um, categories of interest, criminal justice, criminology, public administration. I sent it to everyone. The reason why I've done this is because number one, um, uh, comp twenty-one is a high-level management position. This person also needs to have supervisory skills because they're going to be hiring um, supportive staff, not only another investigator, but also administrative staff. And depending on how, which way this goes, this staff could be even bigger than what we initially allowed it for it. I believe that this position deserves to have someone who has this type of background. They are going to be part of the investigation of police matters which directly affect um, African-Americans who are ten times more likely to be stopped by the police, ten times more likely to be incarcerated. I want to make sure that this person has the education and the background to be able to be successful.
So Alder Carter will move the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Alder, uh, Alder Wajila Hayes is the first to unmute and we'll get the second. Uh, right. Um, Alder Carter, did you wish to speak further to the amendment?
No, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman?
We, we heard the Chair of the Oversight Board talk about the process that went into um, modifying this job description. Um, we obviously know that not all decisions by, by boards and committees are always unanimous. Um, but I greatly appreciate all the work they put into it. Um, I will not be supporting this amendment. I think the message we're sending to the Oversight Board and the community by overruling one of the first decisions that they bring to us, um, is, is a terrible message to send. And so I think it would be a big mistake to modify um, this job, to, to approve this amendment. Um, I think modifying the job as the Oversight Board um, provided us is appropriate. And I do think that there's enough in the job description um, that will get us people with the appropriate level of experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, I have no other Alders in the queue. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, so um, and you also kind of went back and forth on this, um, especially um, before um, C C E C and in the past two weeks now. Um, so I, I um, want to say that like I, I will be supporting the motion and I will do that because um, I really do believe in really the fact that we need to set this person up for success. And I think it's important to note that the recommendation from um, the Equitable Hiring Task Force that um, as we just heard Harper um, and others really highly suggested was to maintain the language, um, the, the original language. Um, and I, I think that's important to recognize. I think it's also important to recognize that the concern around um, changing the language allows someone that does not have um, a post-secondary degree um, in, in the, was, came from, in the name of like, in providing more equity or broadening, broadening um, the hiring pool. Um, but as Harper just stated, we really need to push back on that, um, in that people of color actually are, can be quite uh, highly educated and also um, will be um, applying for this position. Um, and to amend it, um, is not um, necessarily meeting the needs of equity. Also, I want to point to like, we need to be hiring someone that um, is capable of this position and we're asking a lot of them. I heard throughout the entire campaign from all of you basically that we're, we're depending on this independent monitor to solve a lot of problems for us. And that's a lot of pressure to be putting on this person, on one in, on one single person. Um, so I think that it's important to outline, like, you know, some expectations from that. Even hiring the police chief, we expect them to have at least a four-year degree and at least three years of experience. And we're asking this person to be um, have oversight over them and to be investigating the police chief themselves. Um, also, and throughout the nation, we see like there's educational requirements, um, including um, Colorado with an independent monitor um, that requires someone that has at least a master's degree. Um, and while we just heard from Harper, like the um, one of the suggestions was having someone with a law degree because we need someone um, that is well-versed in the law to be able to tackle the issues that we're expecting them to tackle. So I think that it's not um, sending a message that um, we um, don't, aren't with what the committee um, has done. I think we all respect and like highly appreciate all of the passion this committee has put into it. Um, and I, whereas I, I think it sends a message of um, that we recognize the important work that this independent monitor will be doing and that we want to hire the best person for this job.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will be supporting the amendment. And um, the um, the message I hear is um, uh, raising the bar. And the applicants that come will be based upon a measurement of a bar. Um, it, um, the, the thing that bothers me most is, is that uh, when I hear a lower the bar so that, you know, we can admit a more quality of diversity. So that's, that to me, this is me speaking, uh, that's not what, that's not what, what I'm looking at. Um, I'm looking for a qualified individual and I'm looking for a bar that's set and in during that um, interview process, weighing all of those other factors that that person brings to the table to, to make that person qualified. I am absolutely in no respect supporting, and I'm saying lowering the bar. Um, and, and maybe that's, that's not a good term, but um, I am, uh, I'm supporting the um, the the amendment because the bar has to be set high in terms of this person being able to do and function in that position as someone who is comparable to a Comp twenty-one position. And I am not in favor of lowering that standard. And so I am, and I am supporting that, um, the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think my feelings on this were largely represented by Alder Furman um, in the first place. I, I think there is clearly in this case, a lot of deliberation, a lot of really detailed discussion around this. And while I don't think the Common Council should just always defer to the recommendations that are coming to us, I think we should have a really good reason to not do that. And I don't see any, any issues with what's proposed to us. Uh, secondarily, um, I think my own, my own personal views are that the way it's written right now and allowing flexibility for a combination of experience to count equivalently with academic experience is absolutely appropriate. And I don't think in my mind, this is lowering the bar at all. It's simply um, allowing us to choose the best applicant. And I think as, as Harper has alluded to, you know, I think we should expect and hope that this will be a competitive process, that we just have a number of qualified applicants and the minimum standard of this position are in no way going to get us a less qualified applicant. Our job is going to be to pick the most qualified candidate. If that person happens to meet under these, this description and wouldn't have in this other one, then we would have just lost. So, I mean, I, I really don't see what all the discussion's about and I'm happy to support the recommendations that came to us.
Thank you, Alder. All right, so the motion before us is Alder Carter's amendment and uh, it, just because I have lost track slightly and don't have the full language in front of me, I'd like to um, ask staff to make sure that we understand uh, what the amendment would do. Um, so we have the text of the amendment, but the surrounding material, would this amendment still have the language uh, that says other combinations of degree and experience may be substituted? Or is that language gone? Uh, Alder Carter, can you speak to that or can we get staff to answer that?
Be folded in. It can be folded in, but I'll let staff talk. Can be folded in. It can be folded in, but I'll let staff talk about that.
Karen, I think you want to answer that?
Yes, both versions have that language. If you scroll down on the PDF that's attached to this item to pass the experience, you'll see a paragraph about MPD and law enforcement. And below that, you'll see a paragraph that reads, "Other combinations of training and/or experience which can be demonstrated to result in the possession of the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to perform the duties of this position will also be considered." That is present there in both cases.
All right, so I guess maybe a question for Julie and/or Harper. What's the ultimate effect of any of this language? That, that people with or without a certain degree can apply and have their combinations of degree and experience considered?
You can jump in if you like, Julie, but based on what Karen just said, it sounds like it will happen either way. I think what you're all describing is someone setting the bar. Is this bar set? Is someone having a bachelor's degree? With the understanding or expectation that Julie can still screen and get consideration to other experience? Or if this person can have a post-secondary degree, whether that be an associate's degree or whatever, and that person can still get to the table and compete if they have some exceptional experience outside of that. So seems pretty, I think we can get there with either way. Julie, would you have any issue screening with that initial screening, based on anything that you've heard?
No, either way would, would be fine. I could screen on either of them. And it does allow that flexibility if a degree is not present.
Thank you. And just to be 100% clear, nothing in either version of this language prohibits somebody with a higher degree from applying and competing.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, so Alder Foster, is your hand still up or is it up again?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to raise, I don't know either a point of order or a point of privilege, but if either Alder Carter or the clerk or someone could actually just read the exact language for ourselves as well as for everybody that's watching and listening, because I think it would help.
Absolutely, Alder Foster. Madam Clerk, do you have the language? And could you read the, the language of the amendment?
Is this, so this is amended in the attachment, just because I'm also a little confused. Because the other language that Alder Carter sent everyone, under the education, the part about the bachelor's degree is already crossed out in the current version. So I'm not clear what is actually being amended and I apologize, but.
All right, well, if we, if the clerk's not clear, then we cannot proceed.
Right, it's, it's crossed out in the attachment and I'm asking to put it back in, say a bachelor's degree or higher. And then further down in the original, you see where it talks about experience, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not asking for that to be taken out. I think that's part of it, but I also think that you have to have a bachelor's degree or higher.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I'm not amending the whole thing.
So just, just to be clear then, the amendment is to, an attachment to Legisstar 65569. And there are three changes that you're proposing, Alder Carter. The first change is immediately after the education title, which would restore the language, a bachelor's degree, add the words "or higher", and then proceed in criminal justice, criminology, public administration, et cetera. Right, that's change number one.
Correct.
And then change number two would be to strike the language, "A master's degree or a jurist-doctor degree is preferred."
Correct.
And then the third change would be to strike the last bullet point under experience, which had read, "An ideal candidate would have specific expertise in police monitoring, civilian oversight, administration, and procedural justice."
Correct.
And the balance of the document would remain the same.
Would remain the same.
Right. Madam Clerk, are you with us?
Yeah, I believe so. So the second part of the education, the section that starts with the independent monitor shall have four years' experience, that stays?
Correct.
Okay, then I got it. Would you like me to read it back?
Alder Foster, are you good? No, we're good. Thank you. All right, now, on that amendment, with those three changes to the attachment to the resolution, I'm going to presume that we need a roll call. And, I'm sorry, Karen, you had, did you have something that you needed to say before we vote? Go ahead, Karen. You're muted.
I'm so very sorry. The clerk said, I believe I heard the clerk to say that she thought that the language the independent monitor shall have stays. In, in this amendment, it doesn't stay.
So there's an additional change?
Nope. I understa, this is, you had it, you had it, Mayor, when you had described it. You, you got it, you got it. The thing is, if you look in the position description, what was crossed out was the original education language, that very short sentence that Alder Carter is using as part of her amendment. All that language in red with an underline that you see in the attachment is the new, is the new language that was voted on by the board and brought to you today. So that language would be removed. The original language would be returned with those changes that you, for that section, with those changes that you mentioned.
All right, I, I do not think that, in my opinion, that the council knows enough what it is voting on for us to proceed at this point. And, and so what I would like is, Karen, do you have this language in front of you on your screen?
Yes.
And can someone give Karen the ability to share her screen, please, so that we can all look at the language together?
Yep, all panelists can share their screen.
All right, Karen, you should be able to share your screen and please show us the, the language in context.
So what I'll show you is the document that Alder's Carter, Alder Carter's amendment is attempting to amend. Because I don't have Alder's, Alder Carter's amendment embedded in that document. So let me try. Let me try. Okay, so on your screen, what you should have here is you see education. Then you see some text that was struck, struck through. This, I don't know if you, can you see my highlight? That was all there was in the education section, previous to the, the changes made by the civilian oversight board. The civilian oversight board voted to strike this language that is stricken here and to input this language, which is here underlined and highlighted. That's the action of the civilian oversight board. I don't, I don't want to go into the experience section yet. Okay, so what Alder Carter's motion does is strikes, it goes back, it reverts. So this highlighted part that the board voted on, that's before you today, will go away under Alder Carter's motion. And in its place, Alder Carter starts with the, I can't get it to highlight for you. Alder Carter starts with the original language that the council previously passed, makes two changes to this sentence here, or this, this couple of sentences. One, adds or higher after bachelor's degree. Two, strikes out, "A master's degree or a jurist-doctor degree is preferred." So what you end up with in Alder Carter's motion is only the sentence that reads, "A bachelor's degree or higher in criminal justice, criminology, public administration, public policy, sociology, or a closely related field is required." The, all of this, let me highlight that for you. This is all goes if you vote for Alder Carter's motion. I hope that somewhat helped in the education section.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Let's just pause there and see if anybody has questions about that proposed section. All right, not seeing any, so let's go on to the experience section then, please.
Yes, okay, let me scroll a little bit. Okay, I think I caught everything. All right. In the experience section, let me first highlight what the civilian oversight board voted on for changes that are before you today. So before you today, the Oversight Board added administrative leadership experience and struck, if you see here, struck this language about leadership experience in the field of public or private administration practice of law, added a bullet point about professional experience in complex investigations and research. Okay. Removed the point that says, let me try to highlight this, removed the point that said six years of full-time equivalent verifiable professional experience in complex investigations. The civilian oversight board voted to remove the word "working" here and also to remove this language about the ideal candidate. Additionally, they added experience in community relationship building. Alder Carter's motion will, would revert the stricken language. So this would go, this would go, and this would come back. So leadership experience in the field of public or private administration would be back. This would, this would go, this language about professional experience in complex investigations that I've highlighted. But this will be back, six years of full-time equivalent verifiable professional experience in investigations, complex investigations. The word "working" would be back. The bullet about experience in community relationship building will go. And though, she makes one change to this reinstatement, as the mayor highlighted, and we were, her motion would remove an ideal candidate. So, so her motion, Alder Carter's motion also removes this language about the ideal candidate. I hope that helps a little.
Yes, thank you, Karen. That makes it much clearer what this amendment is doing. Let's make sure that the clerk has all of that first. Madam Clerk?
The rest of the recommendations in the document besides those two sections stay? Okay, I got it.
And let me thank you, Alder Foster, for making sure that we got this done. Are there any other questions on what the amendment is doing? All right, seeing none, then on Alder Carter's amendment, which has been moved and seconded, we will have a roll call vote, all those in favor of, I'm going to describe it as reinstating those two sections, removing the edits of the civilian oversight board with a few changes. We'll say aye as your name is called, and those opposed nay, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Reverir?
Aye.
Aye. Vitiver?
No.
No. Wihelye?
Aye.
Aye. Abas is excused. Alboris?
Just swing back, please.
Sure. Benford?
No.
No. Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Carter?
Aye.
Aye. Conklin?
No.
No. Curry?
No.
No. Evers?
No.
No. Figueroa Cole? I'm sorry, what was that?
No.
No. Foster?
No.
No. Furman?
No.
No. Halverson? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Aye.
Aye. Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Heck?
No.
No?
No.
Lemmer?
No.
No. Martin?
No.
No. Miazzi?
Aye.
Aye. And Alder Alboris?
No.
No. That is seven ayes and 12 nos.
Thank you. With seven ayes and 12 nos, that motion fails and we're back to the main motion, which is to adopt, as amended by the civilian oversight board. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing no objection, that item is adopted. And that will bring us to item 53, which is Legisstar 65618, amending the Fire Department and Public Health Madison-Dane County operating budgets. And we do have one registrant, Dan Fitch of East Gorham, in support, available to answer questions. Are there any questions for our registrant on item 53? Seeing none, Vice President Martin, can we have a motion, please, on item 53?
Move approval?
Alder Carter?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Are there questions for staff? Seeing none, is there discussion? Vice President Martin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to pull this, not for any kind of controversial reasons or anything, but I wanted to give credit to everybody who's worked on this project so far. We started working on the potential for a mental health ambulance crisis or crisis response that would put, excuse me, a response to mental health emergencies, check persons, potential drug or alcohol issues into a, like a social worker as well as a, a, a community paramedic. And in this last year, we've, this, this group has done a tremendous amount of work. And we have the community paramedics hired and the Journey, the Journey staff has been hired. They're currently going through training and we are hoping to have them, you know, on the streets and ready to go, maybe by August, which is tremendously exciting. And I think is going to be a really great step in the right direction to making sure that, that some of our residents and people who come to visit here, if they're having a mental health emergency, that they're getting the proper, the proper care and, you know, things are not escalated needlessly. So I just wanted to say thank you. There's, there's a whole bunch of people who put this together. And so we've had people from the county, from Journey, from MPD, from the finance office, from the Fire Department, obviously, the mayor's house, and public health. So this has been a really robust discussion that we have had over the last year. And this point, it's, it's just so exciting that we can also put that we can also put together a program manager, which is what this is, um, proposing. Um, someone who can evaluate this program as it goes, collect data, et cetera, and really help us grow this program and, and make it fit Madison and our needs the best way we can. So that's what I have to say. I'm tremendously thankful for everybody who's put any work into this. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Martin. Miss Alder Carter? Alder Carter, you're, there you go.
I wanted, oh, wait a minute. I want to ditto what, um, Vice President Martin has said. Um, the committee has really dug deep and has been diligent and compassionate about this. And I think the end results is going to be absolutely amazing. I also want to thank everyone on the committee. I'm not going to name everybody. They know who they are, but it, it, this is just a tremendous, um, effort that took all of us, including Dane County, Journey, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm very proud of it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboris?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to be added as a co-sponsor to this amendment, to the operating budget. If the clerk could do that. Hopefully it passes, obviously. Looks like it has the support, but in the event that it does, I want to be attached to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, the clerk will add you as a sponsor, Alder Conklin.
Us, same. I would like to be added as a sponsor as well, please.
The clerk will add Alder Conklin as a sponsor as well?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Miyazi.
Yes, uh, if you could add me too, I appreciate it.
The clerk will add Alder Miyazi as his co-sponsor as well?
Does everyone want to be added?
We're almost at that point, Alder.
We're almost at that point. Why don't we just add everyone? That'd be wonderful.
Is there any objection to adding the entire council as a sponsor? Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney, I'm sure you, sure you're, you're not objecting.
I'm, uh, dittoing, uh, because I'm.
Okay. Uh, so we will, without objection, add the entire council and the mayor as co-sponsors on the item. Uh, anyone who is not there already. And seeing no other Alders in the queue, um, I would like to just take a, a point of personal privilege, uh, to thank Vice President Martin on this, uh, because without your leadership, Vice President Martin, this item would not be before us at all. Um, it was your bringing it to our attention here in the mayor's office, uh, that got it into the budget in the first place and, and has allowed all of this work to go on. So thank you for your leadership on this item. Um, and with that, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item fifty-three? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item fifty-three. And Madam Clerk, I believe the first name you called tonight was Alder Verveers. Is that correct? Alder Verveer, we have reached the end of our agenda.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, at nine oh four PM, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.